Twenty-four meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. We have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Oh, for personnel, motion by Wes and a second by Lindsay, all in favor, unanimous. Okay, first on our agenda is recognitions with Dr. Leigh Anne Rice.
I got to be the first one to say that. Oh, I got it. Hi, my name is Leigh Anne Rice. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and it is my pleasure to welcome you this evening and be able to celebrate some really special people this evening. First, we are going to celebrate the dance team from South Forsyth High School. So if you all would come forward. The dance team is led by Carla Yonk. She is a team sponsor, and these ladies were the 2024 state champions in dance for hip hop and palm. Congratulations. We have some of our juniors and seniors. We have a team of 23, but we've got our juniors and seniors, some of them here that weren't dancing somewhere else tonight. So we've got our captain Maggie McRae.
We're going to expect you to dance down and shake hands.
Morgan. Madison. Leah. Brooke. Haley. Lily. Alyssa. And Marilla. And if you are here supporting our South Forsyth High School dance team, would you please stand so we can recognize you for your support of them? I know Principal Pam Bibic is very proud. Next, I would like to recognize our Employee of the Month, Lisa Argento. Please come forward. Lisa is the cafeteria manager at the Academies for Creative Education, and she is just absolutely phenomenal, which you will get to hear in just a minute with all of the amazing things that were said. I have chosen a few to highlight today. Lisa is not just in charge of making sure we get tasty meals every day. She is also a shining example of strong personal qualities. First off, Lisa is super organized. Have you ever wondered how our cafeteria runs like clockwork? That is all thanks to her planning skills. From ordering ingredients to scheduling meals, she makes sure everything happens smoothly. But it's not just about being organized. She is also one of the friendliest people to students and staff alike. She greets us with a smile every day and genuinely cares about how we're doing. She makes everyone feel welcome and catered to, and when things get busy, she doesn't stress out. I need your secrets for that. She stays calm under pressure and handles any issue with grace, even when there's an event at the school or an unexpected challenge. She is the calm in the kitchen. Lisa Argento is an amazing and creative chef. We are always impressed with every catered breakfast and lunch order that we place with her. Every meal is delicious, and her presentation is beyond creative. Lisa is a valuable member of our school community. She goes above to support our students and school staff. She truly cares about those at ACE and goes out of her way to contribute to the culture and climate at ACE. From making a special treat for bus drivers for Transportation Appreciation Week, which I know Mr. Satterfield appreciates, to the daily spa water provided to staff, it is the little things she does to engage our school community. Food is love in my family, and she puts love into the meal she prepares for our school family. Lisa Argento should get Employee of the Month because she is always ready to help others and makes the cafeteria run like clockwork. ACE is always hosting district meetings, faculty trainings, and day-to-day school for three different academic programs: Gateway, Forsyth Academy, and Forsyth Virtual Academy, and Lisa makes running our ACE Cafe look easy. She always has a smile on her face, and she is the best food manager. And finally, Lisa deserves this honor because she notices both when staff and students need support. She has on several occasions checked with me to make sure I have lunch when she's noticed I've had a crazy day. She's asked me to check on students when she has noticed changes in behavior or routine. Lisa is not just a cafe manager, but she is part of how we greet students in the morning, and we help them feel as though they matter at our school. And when your school is focused on students who are struggling with challenges in mental health, recovery, trauma, and/or behavior, this extra care matters. Lisa is an invaluable member of our ACE family, and I'm going to add that you are an invaluable member of our Forsyth County Schools family. Congratulations.
And the bacon is amazing.
Yes, it is!
We love breakfast beans, even though we have to get up early.
Because you're baking.
And Lisa, I love the last part because it's so important. We're a district that prides itself on being safe, connected, and thriving, and the connections you make in the cafeteria and that your team makes, they're so critical to our student success. So thank you so much for what you do. And as always, we'd like to thank Jim and Nix for sponsoring our Employee of the Month. And next on our list, the Governor has proclaimed this School Board Appreciation Week, and it is our honor to celebrate the amazing school board members that we have here in Forsyth County. And I think we are going to be playing a video to do that.
Make this video.
This was actually made.
Our achievements, our opportunities, our futures are better because of you. From our nest to yours, we would just like to say, "Thank you."
How much we appreciate your leadership, your support, providing resources so we can take care of our students. I can say this about these five individuals. Number one, they get paid very, very little money to be on the board. They don't do it for money. They do it because they love their community, they care about kids, and they care about the future of our school system and our community, and it's an honor to work alongside each and every one of you. So I have a little token of appreciation. First of all, Darla White, our chair.
Next on our agenda is the Superior Spotlight by Riverwatch Middle School, Principal Carrie McAllister.
Can you hear me now? As Leigh Anne said, my name is Carrie McAllister. I'm the very proud principal of Riverwatch Middle School, and today we're actually going to talk to you a little bit about Panther Pride and how that keeps us safe, connected, and thriving. I'm going to ask that Ms. Amy Johnson and Raven Hunsaker, our co-leads for PBIS, come forward and tell you a little bit about our history and why this is so important to us as a school.
Hello. I'm Amy Johnson.
I'm Raven Hunsaker.
We're the co-coaches, and we're going to tell you a little bit about the history of PBIS at our school. So we have a timeline of when we started, and we go back and we think to 2016, when everyone knew how to do school. Our students came to us from elementary, and they knew naturally how to assimilate into the routines. Then we had some changes happen. We all reckon back to the COVID years, and we saw a great need that we had to go back and teach our students some of the basics of how to do school, how to be a student, certain routines and expectations. So we had some great tools at our fingertips with PBIS and the training we had done within the county. We had Tara Davis as one of our coaches who has helped us along the way, part of school safety. And so from that, we used some of those tools to implement clearer expectations for our staff members so that we could teach our students. In 2019, we morphed that into building a troubleshooting team. So it's not just led by one teacher or a handful of teachers, but we have teachers throughout the school that help develop our lessons of how we teach our students, that help communicate and promote clear expectations and clarity for how we behave and operate. As we moved into more of our experience, and we had some trial and error, we had some successes and some mistakes, we were able to earn our operational status from the state, which unfortunately, the name doesn't imply a great advancement, but that was a big deal for us to get there. We noticed that when we increased our intentionality in teaching our students lessons on day one of how we behave and operate, we had great success and traction, and that really changed and morphed into a clear school culture where everyone could be safe, connected, and thriving. So we're continuing that growth, and we're developing into Tier Two training now. We're growing in that area. We've had two years of serving at operational status. So we've had some great success from that. So what we do and why we do it, this comes into some of the critical elements that we have learned along the way and developed. So we're going to talk about some of these items today. We had to really go back and look at our expectations and how we delivered these lessons to students. It had to start with teachers. You have to start with your staff. So we had clear expectations. That was step one, understanding what is a teacher-managed versus what is an administrator-managed behavior. We developed tools for teachers so they could understand how to make this a conversation with students and how to coach them along the way to make better choices, to make those positive choices. That's the PB in PBIS, Positive Behavior. And then we had to, of course, get it student-facing. So that's the step three. That's our matrix. So we have the PRIDE acronym standing for Personal Responsibility, Respect, Integrity, Determination, and Empathy. And under each attribute, we have some ways that students can show that every day at Riverwatch.
And I'm Raven Hunsaker. As Amy was saying, we found the need to go back to the basics with students, and just in terms of like arrival procedures, how to walk down the hallway, how to go to the cafeteria. And we were asked by our principal at the time to develop these lessons that really showed students the proper way to, not really the proper way to behave, but what was expected of them as Riverwatch students. And so we developed the PBS team, developed lessons, and we targeted specific areas that we felt we had a need for. Technology was a big one because after the COVID years, everyone had, it was one-to-one for a while, and they'd gotten so used to their technology, so we kind of had to back off of that a little bit. But the lessons were developed using success criteria, learning targets, which the teachers were using in the classroom, and we had examples of correct student behavior and incorrect student behavior, and it got the conversation going because teachers had just taught the lessons on day one of school. And there was a time limit that usually lasted around 10 minutes. So you still had time to meet your students and do your intro activity or get-to-know-you activity, but everyone started from day one knowing what the expected behavior of every Riverwatch student is. And it was tremendous. Even just, we would be talking a month later, and Amy and I are like, wow, you know, behavior is so much better. Students knew what they were expected to do when they came in, how to walk down the hall, how to use the lockers correctly, what the technology protocol was, and it changed our behavior drastically. And we've been doing it now for two or three years, and it's made a bigger difference every year. One thing that we noticed also is not only with the students, but it put the teachers all on the same page. And what Amy was showing you a while ago was our behavior matrix that really clarified what was a teacher-managed behavior and what went straight to admin, and what was in the middle, which we use counseling and our MTSS coordinator. But everyone is now on the same page. And we develop booster lessons periodically during the year the PBIS team does that target specific behavior needs per grade level because I teach eighth grade. Eighth grade behavior needs might be different than sixth. So we can tailor those throughout the year for teachers to give to students that target specific behavior needs for their grade level. So it's made a tremendous difference in behavior. Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Yeah, go ahead.
So in order to build an effective program with PBIS and implement things that make a difference, here are some elements that we saw had the biggest impact on our growth. It mattered that it was a teacher-led initiative rather than being an admin initiative. It started with two teachers in the classroom who saw that need, and so we had some traction with our fellow teachers. We knew where they were. We were living that walk. We were dealing with it every day. So having someone who's invested in that and helping, you know, beat the boots on the ground, seeing the students every day, that made a big impact. Admin support is, of course, invaluable because we couldn't have the time to teach the lessons without admin saying, sure, let's do it. Let's all do it. It's a school-wide initiative. Yes, we need some uniformity. We need some school-wide procedures. So that made a big difference as well. We also had to tinker with this and try. We learned that it couldn't be all good and all bad. We had to find a balance of dealing with referrals and discipline issues, as well as rewarding kids with points for positive behavior. So the students have now understood that system, and they have bought into it. It is definitely their currency. They love seeing that they can earn points and use them as credits to buy stuff in the school store. So they have found their currency. They see that it is intentional, that we are recognizing deserving students. And what I love about this is that sometimes those quiet, well-behaved, everyday kids slip through the radar. They fall behind because we're not recognizing them for all their good choices. So this way, we can be intentional, and they can earn points and get that accolade just as much as someone who is struggling and learning how to behave. So our acknowledgements is a big part of what we do. We not only do it for students, but we also do it for staff. We also came together this year. We had our first-ever Panther Pride Assembly, where school-wide, we acknowledged all the great things that we do, where we are thriving, where we are connected through our clubs and through our service projects and all of our initiatives. We are also looking at that vertical alignment with Lambert. We had some Lambert guests come and speak with our students. So we are growing that area, but it was a great success.
And we sent students over to Saddle Bridge.
Yes, we did.
To get that vertical alignment from elementary all the way through high school.
Yes, we did. All right. I'm going to throw it back to Ms. McAllister now.
So as you can see, if you want to see it, you have to teach it, and that's one of the things that they have done for several years. But specifically this year, I think that one of the things I say to the kids every day is, you know, the two things you need to do: be kind and work hard, and that's what Panther Pride is. And so I would like for you to hear from our students about what they have learned in the past two or three years, depending. We have seventh and eighth graders that are here today to speak with you.
Hi, I'm Grace Hubbard, and I'm an eighth grader at Riverwatch Middle School. For me, pride is meant having respect for everyone, whether that is the faculty or the students. Pride has made me better connected to my peers.
Hi, my name is Natalia Gomez Gonzalez, and I am a seventh-grade ambassador at Riverwatch Middle. I think pride helps students know their expectations and what to do in school. It helps students connect with their peers around them for an everyday basis.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Ruiz, and I am in seventh grade and an ambassador at Riverwatch Middle. The PRIDE acronym has definitely helped me connect with all of my teachers and mentors personally, and I've been able to show all of my peers, mentors, and obviously, teachers that I show personal responsibility, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy on an everyday basis.
Hi, my name is Trey Collins, and I'm the eighth-grade vice president at Riverwatch Middle School. Panther Pride, to me, means to persevere and go the extra mile, to do more than you're expected to do, and to be and act better than you're expected to be. To me, it means to thrive, and not just in school, but in the real world, too.
We have one more thing for you guys.
So this is for you guys to show appreciation for.
Yes, go ahead. So this is for School Board Appreciation Month.
So thank you very much for your time.
No, I was just going to say, first of all, excellent job. Thank you for speaking and sharing from your heart. And what I loved is, you know, when you were talking, started off about this, you know, I mean, this is, you know, it's really setting expectations, following the rules, right? Like getting your standards in order. So you could look at this as, okay, you need to follow the rules, and not doing this from like a punitive standpoint, but you're able to get the expectations and the rules across in such a way that like empowers them, you know? And you can see that they really have a stake in their school, and, you know, you're thinking about your future and these qualities that are going to keep you moving forward. So I just love it. I love everything about this program. So, well done.
Trey, I think, you know, you may not realize it just yet, but you hit on a really important life lesson: always do more than is expected. That's how you succeed in this world, because everyone's going to be doing the bare minimum. But if you do more, you have a big advantage right there. So that was a bit of genius. I visited last year when Pam was there, and Carrie, you were there already, and I was so impressed with this program when I was there. It was one of the moments that really stuck out to me and I've remembered. I was waiting for you guys to come present about this because I knew it's worthy. I mean, people might think this is just like a little awards or whatever. These guys have an entire infrastructure built around this. They have a digital store where kids collect currency. They have a virtual economy for PBIS. They have data analytics where there's a cycle that they're constantly improving and refining the process. And this is serious work. This is not like, oh, you were good today, you get a candy. Like, this is really almost engineered to change behavior in a positive way. And from what I can tell, it's a huge success. So thank you, guys. I'm really impressed by this program.
Yeah, and it's not lost on us that PBS is not easy. It is hard work, and y'all have to be intentional about everything you do in this program. So we definitely appreciate that and see the work in this, and it shows in your students, who are fantastic, by the way.
Thank y'all very much. We are going to take a short recess, and if you want to stay for the business portion of the meeting, you are more than welcome to, but if you would like to leave, now would be the time. And if you guys will come up here, we'll make a picture with our card.
Staff, too.
They don't care. If I could have everyone's attention to call the meeting back to order. Next on our agenda is public participation on agenda items, and there's no one tonight. Then we have a consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to get any questions answered and go over this consent agenda?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor, unanimous. And then we have presentation and discussion items. First, we have the finance report with Larry Hamill. He always has to follow. You have the hardest act to follow, don't you?
You've been doing pretty good, though.
Hey, I've been trying to settle my game lately. All right. This month, we're here to talk about the February 2024 financial statements. As always, we keep goal three in mind. So first up is the cash receipts and disbursement statement. So we started the month off about $281 million. And of course, you know, we collected the majority of our tax revenue, and all we really get a large chunk now is QBE. So we'll start seeing that drawdown take place between now and probably September. So we did drop a little cash a little bit. We were down to $266.8 million. And the other thing you'll notice is the difference between the revenue collections and disbursements, that number will start getting bigger and bigger difference as we go on. On the revenue collections, we're at 82.23%. This year, last year, we were 80.4, so we're a rail ahead of schedule right now. The one thing that is nice to look at is, last year, we're at 98.86% on Avalorum. We're at 99.59. As you can see, we only got 1.2 million left to collect, and we already had collected about $600,000 this month. So on the rate we're going, we're definitely going to collect more than we had predicted. On the expense size, we spent $52 million, a little bit more than we predicted this month. We're at a 65.5 spend rate. This time last year, we were at 64.86. So we are spending a little bit faster than we did last year. The difference with the revenue versus expenses, we are a lot ahead of schedule right now. On the debt service cash analysis, the debt service and just the regular cash account, LGLP account, is about 4.7. This time last year, it was 16. Because we lowered the millage rate, that number was slowly dropped down as we go further along the next couple of years compared to what it has been in the past. And don't forget, we have the money reserved in Splosh Five and in debt service for debt service payments. The Splosh Five account, we're drawing that down pretty quick. We get to the end of that life for Splosh Five. We're at 10.5 million. We were at 40 million this time last year. You can see how fast we're drawing that money down. Splosh Six, of course, we know we still got 30-something months left to collections on that. We're at 45, almost 46 million, and we were at 42 last year. So we got 61 million right now in those accounts, and last year, we had about 98, and the majority of the difference is Splosh Five. For special revenue funds, right now, the revised budget with all the changes recently is about 14.9. We spent a little bit over a million dollars. We're at 88. We're on schedule where we were last time. The only big difference is we don't have the CARE Act III money to spend. We spent last year on the ERUs. So capital projects and school food nutrition, capital projects, we're down to 50 million. We're about 31.6. Again, Splosh Five is drawing down significantly, so there's less cash in the day-to-day cash to take care of things. And then Splosh, excuse me, school food services, slightly spent more than we did revenue. That was our goal every month going forward, to burn down that fund balance. On the investment summary, the good news here is last year, we had about $173 million in LGLP fund, and maxing everything out. We were able to add about 20 more million into that fund, so we're collecting on $193.7 million. Right now, with the rates like they are at LGLP funds, we're collecting a little bit over a million dollars a month right now. So we'll definitely hit our $5 million year-to-date number that we had predicted for the budget this year. On the Fund 200, that number's down significantly. We only have $3.9 million in that fund. Last year, we had 12.3. The nutrition fund is new this year. The nutrition fund is new this year. Tom called us up and said he would like to move another $5 million into that to earn more interest. So we moved that $5 million to that fund this month. The SPOS 5 account had about $40 million in last year. We're down to 10.5. There again, we're spinning those funds down. SPOS 6 is at 46, and we had 42. In total, we have $269 million this year. And last year, we actually had the almost the exact same amount of dollars in that fund. On the SPOS 4, I do want to point out that for the last 12 months, if you go back to February of '23, you'll notice, except for that one month in August when they had some catch-up money, the 15.83% year-over-year collections, that we've been pretty flat. And you'll see that for January, we were at 8.36%. I don't know if that's the start of a trend or not, but talking around to other people, they're starting to know this increased spending in collections in other counties as well. So we'll see if we've come out of that soft recession drop, and if we're seeing the uptake again of some kind of increase in spending. The elementary schools have about $5 million in their accounts. This time last year, it was almost exactly same amount. Those schools are at 2.3. We're at 2.1 last year. High school is 6.9. We're at 6.4. All the spends you see in there are average for this time of the year. Overall, we got $14.4 million in the schools. We had about 13.6 last year. And the balances really haven't changed that much from last year. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Next, we have an update on the homeless youth council with Wes McCall.
Thank you, Larry. I get to follow finances. Dr. Beard and fellow board members, I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to give you an update on the homeless youth council. We're a little early this year. We usually do it later in the year. But I think this year, we wanted to talk a little bit about our rising numbers. And then we have some exciting announcements to make. And so at this time, Kim Pluhar, who is our McKinney Vento, will come down. If you remember, when the board created the homeless youth council, the purpose was not to create a new organization or a new 501(c)(3), but to create a council made up of community members that will help align established resources to help the growing homeless population in Forsyth County. And over the last three years, four years, we have met, and our resources that we have and the members that are the council have grown dramatically. I mean, when we have our meetings, the room is full because we have so many communities, I'm sorry, organizations in our community that serve some way and fashion the homeless youth, and we just bring them together. And so at this time, I was going to turn it over to Kim and talk a little bit about the McKinney Vento program.
So I wanted to go ahead and just review, just a quick update, just so to remind you and refresh. The McKinney Vento program is the homeless education program, is federal, state, and local. It defines the definition of homelessness educationally. It's different than HUD. And our goal is to identify homeless children and youth, facilitate their enrollment, attendance, academic success in Forsyth County schools, and to remove barriers. We have four categorical eligibilities. Number one is families or students living in shelters due to economic hardship. Number two is doubled up. Those trends are astounding, and you'll see that in the graphic that's coming up. But our numbers of doubled-up families have grown significantly. And we're not only doubling up, tripling up, last year we talked about quadrupling up, now we're contupling up due to the lack of affordable alternative housing options. Our families who are doubled up are not just moving every three months. They're moving every two to three weeks. We have one to two change of addresses since the beginning of 2024 that are coming in a day at this point in time. So that is a different trend, and that's a different phase of homeless education this year. The third one is families who are unsheltered, and that means they're not living in something that's habitable. It could be a car. It could be a tent. It could be a workplace, or it could be someplace that just doesn't meet housing standards. And by that, I mean it's filled with mold, rodent-infested, et cetera. And then the fourth are families that are living in hotels or motels due to economic hardship. And I do stress that because some referrals will come through. Hotels and motels are not a categorical eligibility. It has to be because of a lack of alternative affordable housing. It's not, I'm building my dream home, and I need to stay in a hotel. I'm homeless. You know, that's not the definition under McKinney Vento. So here is a comparison from the 1920s school year till today. Please remember, when I show you this graphic, that eligibility starts July of every single school year, and it ends the last day of school. And unfortunately, we've had seniors even qualify as unaccompanied homeless youth on the last day of school because something happened at graduation. So I wanted to show you those numbers. We have already exceeded last year's numbers, and last year was our record. So we're currently at 1,044 students because we had a number of them qualify before this presentation. But I wanted to show you that growth. We've talked about, two years ago, we had a 20% growth. Last year, we had a 20% growth, and we're already exceeding last year's numbers. So here is a breakdown of the categorical eligibility for McKinney Vento students so far this year. We have 24 in shelters, 954 that are doubled up due to economic hardship. We have 18 unsheltered, and then we have 65 who are in hotels or motels. I also facilitate the Metro Atlanta PLC for McKinney Vento liaisons. I heard Cobb County talking about a trend a year ago that I just kept in my mind, and that's that their families could not afford a full month of hotels. This year, we're seeing our families can't afford a full week of hotels, and they're hotel shopping and hotel hopping from night to night due to the increase of hotel costs and housing costs. And so that is definitely affecting some of attendance and full participation in school. This is unaccompanied homeless youth. Remember, unaccompanied is not in the nighttime presence of your legal parent or guardian. Meet the definition of homelessness, and then youth, you could be 19 years old and still be a youth in the eyes of the school system because you're still a student with us. And so here is a breakdown by age of the unaccompanied homeless youth category. There are 106 students who have qualified under that designation so far this year. Okay, comparable services. I haven't talked about this a lot, but it is part of federal programs. That's other federal programs that we collaborate with and coordinate with. That has to do with our gifted populations, our English language learners/Title III, our special education students, and those students who participate in CTAE, career tech ag education. And I wanted to show you a breakdown. Last year, our ESOL population represented about 42% of MV students. With what's going on in the globe, we have had an increase in transition services. And because families that move here cannot afford housing immediately, we've had an increase of our ESOL population. It's grown over 10% in one year. So I did want to show that to you. Our gifted population, 1%, does not represent one student, but it is 1% of our MV population. And then our IDEA and our special education is about 18%. And so we also have overlapping. So we might have a student who moves here, and they've never been served in school before. And they have a emergency 504 that needs to be built, and they might have other federal programs as well. So it's threading the needle between comparable services so that we can support homeless, special education, and possibly Title III. So I just wanted to give you that example. That is something that's trending. And then we also want to make sure that our students have access to CTAE pathways. And so I am proud to say that we have 27% of our students participating in CTAE pathways. And that's part of our stakeholder input that we had at the CTAE meeting of how to increase that so that more students can participate and how to remove those barriers. As far as McKinney Vento goes, we talked about what the McKinney Vento program does with identification, immediate enrollment. And that's why the McKinney Vento office is strategically housed in the registration department. We're able to meet immediately with families as they walk in, so there's no delay, and collaborate with all the paperwork that's needed there. But we also want to remove barriers for academic success. To do that, we collaborate with students, with parents, with student support, the department I'm housed in, and with other federal programs. School supplies and backpacks. Last year, we mentioned at the presentation, we had families coming in saying, do you know how much a pack Marcus is? This year, we can't keep school supplies and backpacks on shelves. We have restocked at least five times this year, and we are running low yet again. And so that is a high need. As, you know, you've got more and more need. We've got a cost choice that families are having to make. Am I going to buy school supplies, or am I going to buy food? And so school supplies is a high need this year. Health department, we are so thankful. And Heidi, who is our county nurse, has done an amazing job collaborating meetings with the health department. They do honor a voucher to help our families get the vaccines that are needed and to get the Georgia 3300 form and the 3231. So we're very thankful for that partnership. The school-based health clinic has literally saved one of our unaccompanied homeless youth's lives this year. And I'm not saying that exaggerated. Literally saved his life. So we're so thankful for that. And our students are able through McKinney Vento to go to the school-based health clinic, and we're very, very thankful for that partnership. We actually had to give out two vouchers today. We've got six students. And then school stability and school of origin, as I mentioned, with the rising growth of volatility in housing, whether it be doubled-up situations or hotels or motels, school of origin and school stability is really a trending life cycle right now. Grant-funded activities. So we've got the end of our PHCY. We actually ended it, and we got reallocated funds from the state. Yay, we got money to spend. With that money, we were able to hire a part-time social worker. She started in March when we hit 1,000 students, and she has not stopped since. She works 20 hours a week. So we're really happy to have that addition as part-time support. We have McKinney Vento tutoring. Many of our students have experienced academic gaps. And so we currently have 16 active tutors. We just onboarded our newest tutor, and we just lost a tutor last night. So we're down to 15. Sorry, just kidding. 15 tutors. We still have seven elementary schools that aren't served. We have some middle schools that aren't served. And our high school, that is very hard to fill because students work and time during the day is hard. We do work with other resources to support the academic needs in high schools. We have our MV coaches. We currently have 1.5 MV coaches working on youth and resiliency. They are serving over, I believe, 170 to 180 students and meeting with them for 20 to 30 minutes on a weekly or biweekly basis. So we're very thankful for that executive functioning and resiliency. The feedback students have given, one student said, I feel like I can breathe again after I talk to you. And so one of the things that I'm going to talk about in partnerships, we're really looking at how to build this mentorship, coaching, counseling continuum, because it's not an either/or. It's an all-and to support our McKinney Vento students and the trauma and the different crises that they face in their young lives. Professional development, we were happy to attend Embark, and there are some other professional developments that we just got that reallocated fund. We're going to be focusing on attendance training so that we can support the gaps in attendance for our homeless children and youth that aren't just related to homelessness, but to other issues that we're seeing district-wide. Training, we do train staff. We provide technical assistance on an ongoing basis. School supplies, already mentioned, parent and family engagement materials. One of the things that we found last year our parents truly appreciate is the opportunity to access and know how to use parent and family engagement materials. So we have provided those to families, and we'll continue through the end of the school year. We'll also provide summer learning materials to help address the academic gaps and so they don't grow over the summer. And then after-school scholarships. Remember those reallocated funds from the state? We're so thankful. We're going to be launching after-school scholarships and learning labs, effective after spring break. That formal announcement, well, it's made now, but we'll be working with school staff to go ahead and work on what that looks like to launch. Our partnerships, we're thankful for the place of Forsyth. They're currently working on the gift of prom so that our homeless children and youth and our students who need help attending prom can access that. Family Promise of Forsyth, they have expanded to community partnerships and community support as well as their transition house they have affiliation with, as well as their rotational program. United Way, we're thankful for their support. We have gotten their stuff-the-bus materials multiple times this year. And then we've got the FOCO Drop-In Center, which was a YHDP a youth housing demonstration project through HUD. It's cross-sector work that we were able to join at the table last year. And we now have an approved HUD-funded drop-in center for unaccompanied homeless youth that meet the HUD definition 24 and under. So that means some of our students who may have been unaccompanied homeless youth at 16, we're seeing again with three, four, and five-year-olds. So they may get served through this program as well as our current unaccompanied homeless youth population. So we're very thankful to have that. And it is still in the works of having the final approvals with the threat of government freezes. There were some funding freezes that delayed their launch start. And then Community Connections, we're thankful for their partnerships. Head Start, there's always a need for more preschool and early learning among homeless children and youth. The Health Clinic and the School-Based Health Department, sorry, and the School-Based Health Clinic with Georgia Highlands. And then Mentor Me, we're expanding partnerships with Mentor Me to expand that mentorship dynamic for homeless children and youth. And now Wes.
Are there any questions for Kim about what she talked about?
No questions. It really hits home when you look at the numbers and realize that's a whole elementary school that are classified as McKinney Vento kids. That is a whole elementary school. That's a lot. And it's grown over the years. I watched it from just a handful here and there to now a little bit more, a little bit more, and you see the progression there. So it is something we have to focus on, and I'm glad to see agencies stepping up, but there always needs more, right?
Yeah, I've learned so much over the last couple of years. And, you know, looking at this data, you know, for me, somebody in the citizen, in the community, you should look at this and say, okay, doubled up. Well, the might-as-well's hierarchies of needs have been met because they have a place to be. Well, these students have their own challenges. Yeah, they might have a place to stay tonight, but they also have other challenges they have to meet. And so the other thing is, if you look at the unsheltered, 18, that's 18 too many, in my mind. And so we're working on some things with that. And, you know, I have to give Kim some kudos because she is just so amazing. You guys can tell that her leadership and her passion, she serves with her heart, and we're just so grateful to have you. And I know that I could be a pain to work with, and when people are calling me and saying, let's meet, I'm calling, I'm calling Kim and saying, hey, can we meet for coffee? So I don't know when you get your job done, but, you know, I appreciate the time you spent with us. But I think we've built a great platform of support and partnerships. And so, you know, helping one student at a time. There's a couple of things I want to talk about in here. First was the data collection. Over the period of the last couple of years, we have determined there's no real source of truth when it comes to data collection for the homeless youth. The HUD has their own process. Some organizations out there have their own process. But the McKinney Vento program is the only stable, consistent, year-to-year data collection process that we have. And so now, all the organizations in Forsyth County that serve the homeless use our numbers for their data because it's the only source we have. And so we were able to establish that. Yeah, absolutely.
And one of the things that was promising this year is that when they did the regional point-in-time count for HUD, they reached out to us to find out our shadow data. And I think that is direct results of that cross-sector work with YHDB. One of the things that we discussed was how do we capture the shadow data if HUD's not going to consider the homeless education numbers? How do we capture shadow data? How do we look at what HUD is saying is 1% and we're saying is 1,044? And they're capturing 15, 20, 30 in that point-in-time count. And remember, the point-in-time count for HUD is always the shortest and coldest day of the year.
And it rained this year.
And it rained this year.
And they won't come back.
So, but we're thankful that they did seek input from school systems. And so that collaboration, that cross-sector work is gaining momentum. And so we're very thankful for that as we look to align resources.
So 2024, we're expanding our support and network of organizations. We have Mentor Me that has been brought on to help with mentoring and coaching. We are going to open the drop-in center, which is exciting. We're going to foster homes. We need to increase to foster homes and respite homes in Forsyth County. In January, we had 100 students in Forsyth County part of the foster program. 35 to 40 of those are out of the county. So they are fostered somewhere else. And we know that having a stable environment for these students in the community in which they belong and their friends are in, then it's important to have them stay in Forsyth County. So we need to increase the foster homes in Forsyth County. And then the other thing we approach the facts about is respite homes and using the respite process and program for emergency housing. And I think we're really close to working on getting that finalized and how we can work with that data collection. We're going to try to improve that. And then some action plans for overlapping community trends. What we see happening here is also happening in other counties around. And so how can we determine, you know, the best organizations to serve everybody within that community? And then seek partnerships for some more housing and nonprofits. We will welcome anybody to the table that has solutions for that. We've actually been contacted by people statewide that meet with us and want to know how we're doing this, and so it's been great.
What's the drop-in center?
Go ahead.
So the drop-in center is that youth homelessness demonstration program is through the Department of Community Affairs in HUD. And the state of Georgia Balance of State, not the COCs, but the Balance of State, received $11.7, $11.2 million for either emergency rapid rehousing or supportive services only. So the drop-in center is a supportive services only that Community Connections applied for. And that will be a place for our unaccompanied homeless youth to connect. It will also be a local housing management information system, point of contact, which we have not previously had, where our unaccompanied homeless youth can apply for housing through HUD and access regional points of contact. That's been something that's been a high barrier to access for a lot of our families because we're part of a balance of state, and we've got multiple counties within our region. Families, if they want to go to the office, need to drive four counties away to go to that office. So we will. we will have that through the drop-in center where our families or our unaccompanied homeless youth that qualify can access housing resources. We do have a supportive services only, so we're not opening up a shelter, but we will connect students with housing resources and low barriers so that they can get the services they need to have housing stability and coaching and counseling.
And so if a homeless youth is in the community and they need a hoodie, they can come get the hoodies that we all collected at Christmas time. So that's for that. So I know what you guys are asking yourselves and what you're going to ask me next is, how can you help, right? We need to support our network of organizations. The Place of Forsyth does not have enough food. They need some food drives. So we need to see how we can help the Place of Forsyth get more food. They have on their website the list of food that they need, canned food and things like that. So please, share on your social media. Let's get to the place. Let's get them some food because they support all homelessness, not just the youth, but majority of them are the youth they support. So support them. Forsyth Community Connections. We'll be coming out with a plan next week to talk about how we can help support the drop-in center. And so when that is released, I'd like for you guys, if you don't mind, to share that with your contacts, and maybe we can get some local businesses or somebody to help finalize the drop-in center and what we need there. And then fostering parents. If you know people out there that are empty nesters or their kids are off of college like me, we're going to sign up to be foster parents through the respite program. And so we just ask that you just share that information that we can get more fostering parents in Forsyth County. Anything else?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your support of homeless children. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All righty. Next, we have one action item, Policy GAD: Professional Learning Opportunities with Derek Kershey.
Good evening, everyone. Last month, we proposed to change the board policy to GAD: Professional Learning Opportunities, and the proposal was too simple.
By the language of a policy defining stipend procedures and parameters, as well as eliminating unnecessary procedures. We've reviewed public opinion, and that has not changed our recommended updates to the policy, GAD. So at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Bearden to recommend that policy, GAD: Professional Learning Opportunities, to be amended as proposed.
Recommend the policy be adopted as proposed.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Lindsay and a second by Mike. All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. And next, we have points of information. Anything? Okay. Do we need a short recess? Does anybody need to leave? Okay. We'll just go right on into public participation on non-agenda items. First, we have Jared Grishell.
Thank you. My name is Jared Grishell. First note, Happy Black History Month. Despite the common conception that black history can only be acknowledged in February, I hold to the notion that our American history is common to every shade of skin and can be celebrated every single day. Segregating Americans by color is racist, and I refuse to do it. In other news, I'm happy to report that SB 233 has passed the House and looks like it's on its way to being signed into law by the governor. Last month, some children spoke out against the legislation, but I think they misunderstood its effect and its importance. We are blessed here in Forsyth County with one of the top three county school districts in the state, but not every one of our 159 counties in Georgia is so lucky. Representative Misha Maynor of District 56 noted this when she changed parties last year over school choice. Her district has some schools with only a 3% reading and math proficiency. That's failing 97% of the time, which is completely unacceptable. It is for these children stuck in a cycle of poverty and poor education that SB 233 was intended. Giving lower-income families $6,500 vouchers to apply to either private school or homeschool sets up a system of incentives that no longer allows failing public schools to continue to fail without consequences. All too often, school choice in public schools are seen as diametrically opposed to each other, but there is a distinct difference between defenders of good public schools, like we have here in Forsyth County, and bad public schools, where only 3% of students are proficient in math and reading. Everyone in favor of good public schools should also be supporting policies that give children the opportunity to leave bad public schools. I firmly believe that even if every parent in Forsyth County was offered vouchers, the quality of education in our schools is strong enough to keep the vast majority of them in the public school system. I certainly would for my family, and I'm proud. We have public schools here that could thrive even in direct competition with alternatives. Our example of high performance should be the standard expectation for every child in our state, and SB 233 helps meet that goal. With that said, I'd like to ask the Board to offer their support for SB 365 and SB 154, which will help improve the systems of incentives that protect our children from age-appropriate materials. SB 365 is actually modeled after our library checkout notification system started in 2022, which, along with our sensitive book permission system adopted by the Board in response to parental concerns, seems to be a good compromise worth adopting statewide. SB 154 simply removes the exclusion on distribution of harmful materials to minors from our school libraries. In order to mitigate our risk of liability, we should add contract language for any book distributor providing us with materials that holds them strictly accountable for only providing age-appropriate materials. If we stop the problem at the source with acquisitions, we won't have to worry about screening all of our materials after the fact. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time, and I'd like to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Saf Hassan.
How are you?
I'm doing great. Thank you so much. My name is Saf. Originally, I was coming here to speak about the passing of Senate Bill 233 and how disappointed I truly am. But it passed. It's going to, over the next year, take around $200 million out of public school funding across Georgia. It happened. However, in the last couple hours of just today, March 19, something happened in Atlanta that makes a joke of democracy itself. Representative Crawford had proposed a bill previously, and this bill would advocate for resources for mental health of student athletes because they're often overlooked, that they're mainly just known for athletic ability. So it would provide these resources, right? There's nothing wrong with this bill. I mean, it passed the House, it made it to the Senate. Did its thing. However, in a pitiful and utterly disgusting attempt to capitalize on Senate majorities, the bill has been adjusted to include library book bans, a ban on trans athletes in sports, their appeal of sexual education, and a ban on trans people to use their proper bathrooms. How do we sit here and acknowledge that not one of these bills made it past their actual stages in the House, that the democracy had done its job? People looked at the bill, people denied the bill, and people stopped the bill. But through a pitiful loophole, they've crawled their way back into a harmless bill that now has to be advocated against, losing the opportunity for mental health resources to be given to student athletes. House Bill 1104 was simply a bill to help lower suicide rates in youth, but now it is transformed into discriminatory practices against fellow human beings through a petty loophole in the legislative system. The funny part of this is that I went to Riverwatch Middle School, a school in which was honored here today. I now attend Lambert, and while I am 16, it doesn't mean that I must stand here and ignore the failure of our legislative system as it unfolds before me. It's my duty to stand up for what I think is right. I'm asking you here today to take a step back and understand that this is not okay. I currently attend a high school in the state of Georgia, but I don't want to attend a high school in a state where fellow human beings, my peers, and my classmates are discriminated against purely because some people disagree about how they should live their own lives. You all individually on the Board have the power to influence a lot more than me, and everybody in this audience today also comes equipped with a voice. So I ask everybody here to please stand with me against discrimination. Stand against the pure act of discrimination. Stop House Bill 1104, for it has been corrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have Isabella. And I'm going to let you tell us your last name.
Raffa Choli.
Raffa Choli. Yes.
Thank you all. Good evening. So my name is Isabella Raffa Choli, and I am a student at Alliance Academy for Innovation. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. And I'm here today to kind of just talk with you all, to reflect with you all. As of now, there are 14 days left in the Georgia General Legislative Session, so just about two weeks, right? And as you have heard, HB 1104 began as a fantastic bill working towards strengthening our state's mental health support for student athletes. Today, however, as you heard, the bill was revised with four additional sections that perpetuate nothing more than ignorance amongst our children, with a revised edition of the bill stating verbatim that "no public school or local school system shall be required to provide sex education." Dear board members, I need not tell you how insane is it that we do not mandate that our schools provide sexual health education. Our children deserve to live safe, healthy lives, and that starts with us overcoming immature taboos in order to do what is best for our children, and that we provide the best of resources to equip them to do so. Without regulation, not only are we allowing for our students to navigate their lives without knowledge that is necessary to their physical health, but if we allow important topics to run without regulation, we are setting the stage for our state's definition of quality education to crumble. Especially for students who may not have access to reliable sexual health resources outside of school, it is imperative that all of us here take a stand against these bills that continue to divide communities starting in our schools. I applaud your efforts in fighting for public education thus far because, while I do not agree with all of what he has said, I truly do agree that we have great schools here in Forsyth, and I am proud of that. And especially you all as such strong advocates for quality public education, I implore you all to use your voices to advocate loudly against such divisive legislation. Quality education means equipping our students with the knowledge they need to lead a healthy life, from history to math to science, and yes, to quality sexual health education. Every voice matters on every level in this democratic system that we have built, and calls to our state to regulate and ensure quality public education for all resonate so much, especially coming from school-born members such as you all. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Lindsay and a second by Tom. All in favor? unanimous.